Would you please start us on the pledge?
To the life of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Victor, would you please be first?
Yes. Jehovah God, thank you for this beautiful day. Thank you for your love and your kindness, mercy and faithfulness. God, we ask for your infinite wisdom to be placed upon the council of God and also upon the citizens of this whole valley. We ask for your intervention in inviting the Lord for sure. Amen.
Amen.
Roll call. Nita?
Counselor Johnson?
Here.
Counselor Segola?
Here.
Counselor Ellathorpe?
Here.
Mayor Becker?
Here.
Counselor Lorenz has called in this evening. She will not be here, but a quorum is declared.
Thank you. The approval consent agenda. Have you approved the consent agenda?
Seconded.
It's been moved and seconded that we approved the consent agendas. Any more discussion? Nita?
Counselor Segola?
Aye.
Counselor Ellathorpe?
Aye.
Counselor Johnson?
Aye.
Mayor Becker?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Can I go in here and acquaint and take part in nations? Chief, do you have the floor?
Officer Deavens. Good evening, everybody. It's a great pleasure that I get to square in with you officers. I'd like to introduce anybody you have. I just have my brother, Rosemary. You know my aunt, Marty, Tom, Phil, Bert, my cousin, Michelle, and I don't know where to move them. And back here, the fiancee, and my brother, Heather. This is a unique one for us. This is Brandon's wanted to be a part of Vista particular officer most of his life. I remember definitely since his mom. This is great come true for a lot of people and I'm proud and I'm part of it. Sir, this is pretty cool, too. This is kind of his mentor. This is Ivy Garcia. He's an Alamo, a police officer, and he's here tonight to support the... So we practiced his opus opus. Little by little. Ready for this? Raise your right hand. Get up. Eyes taken.
Hi, Brandon.
You solemnly swear. War affirm. Under the penalties of perjury. That on my honor. I will never betray. My integrity. My character. With public trust. And will always have the courage. To hold myself. And others accountable. For our actions. And will always maintain the highest. And put the standards. And uphold the values. My duties. And the agency I serve. And support the Constitution. And the laws. Of the United States of America. The state of Colorado. City of Monavista. Ordinances. Code of Ethics. Mission statement. And the laws of the county. Swear to carry out all my duties. Acting in accordance. With the love and reverence guidelines. That I will faithfully perform. The duties of a police officer. To which I've been appointed. And upon which I am appointed. Congratulations. Monavista has a tradition as you work up through the ranks, the badge number on your badge is lower. So two-one is 215. So this is the spectrum. Say, you want to say?
Thank you, guys.
So if I can just say a little something real quick. Brandon and I come from the same neighborhood, you know, and I watched him grow up, you know, from being a little police officer that was like three years old, you know? I've watched him grow up and I've watched him with his, you know, dress up as a police officer like every day of the week, you know? And I think it's awesome, man, you know, like it's awesome to see other people's dreams come true. So congratulations, man. It's awesome.
Chief, I just want to ask you a question because I remember when he was little and he rode his bike and he had little blue and red lights on it. Are you going to make him ride that?
We have a bike. Think he's enjoying the car, though.
I'm sure. Yeah, that's really awesome.
Thanks, everybody.
Thank you, guys. Thanks for being here, guys. He's got pretty good following, so we need to move him this way. All right, we'll go to citizen comments. In order to be included on this portion of the agenda, please file a appropriate form with the city clerk no later than noon on Monday prior to the meeting. First one is golf course request. Golf course here?
That would be, that would be, uh, working. So we've had a couple changes.
Step up here and, yeah, please, and then put your name on there, too, please.
Sure.
Sign in. And if you can make sure the green light is on and...
Make sure the what?
The green light. Yeah, you can turn that thing through the podium so it's not, so you're not like talking to the wall.
Okay.
There you go.
Is that better?
Yeah.
Better? Okay. All right, so I'm Dustin Underwood. I'm the secretary at Monavista Golf Club. We've met, we've had a couple of work sessions with the city council and Mayor Becker, and we are in dire need of a lawnmower. Since we had our last work session, that lawnmower that we had presented that was available in Michigan is now sold. So I understand they can't hold, they can't hold stuff forever. But we are working now with a company out of Denver to try to get a mower. This last week, our grasshopper, one of our, one of our rough mowers decided that it was going to fail. So we have parts coming for it, which is fine, routine maintenance, we get it, it's coming. But our fairway mower is slowly becoming a ticking time bomb. So we are, we are in need of some assistance for sure with it. So the first part is I don't have any great specifications or invoices for anything for a secondary mower. So we're still kind of wanting to ask the council to not necessarily table the motion until the next meeting, but hopefully vote to approve it pending an invoice and spec sheet from this company out of Denver so we can, we can get a mower. I also understand that there's issues with the grant. If the grant is unable to be processed, we still have, we still have questions as a board about the $5,000 that was earmarked for that. We would still respectfully request for that $5,000 for sprinkler maintenance. There was a letter that our board included. I'm not sure if it was in the last packet or I can't, I'm sorry, my memory is escaping me as to when, when it was written, but you know, we're, we're just, everybody up there knows our situation and so, you know, we're, we're just, we just need some assistance with the mower to keep it, keep it looking as nice and everything as it is right now. Our course is way ahead of schedule. It's constant, it's busy. We're seeing more rounds played and our course did not look this good in September last year. So it's really kind of all I have. If you have any questions or anything, I can gladly answer those.
Okay, well, I can chime in.
Sure.
Because I was writing that grant and after a second attempt, and I, I was pretty definitive about what we were asking and the DOLA's denial, and we were actually denied again for the additional $5,000.
Okay.
And so I think we're at a brick wall with that right now.
Okay.
It's my impression that that $5,000 has been committed, that we, we talked about. It's not going anywhere. That's right?
Um, so yes, the $5,000 is still there, but you know, again, it was originally your funds is matching for FPLs. So if you want to take that $5,000 and put something on there that it's golf course needs as they seem fit, you can do that, but it was initially set as matching funds. And so that's why we had to request them to come back because that's what you guys originally approved as...
Right.
Was to provide the $5,000.
Okay. My question to the golf course, and you might not know the answer to this right now, I feel like that $5,000 is committed to you and it would be nice if we could use it toward a lawnmower. Is there any way the golf course can, can, I don't know what the additional on this next mower you're looking at, I don't know how much that is.
Well, we're trying to stay within that eight to $10,000 window that we have discussed in, in prior meetings with it. I can certainly take it back to the board and see if there's a way with it as a way to continually to improve our course out there. We did have a fleet of carts, you know, we did, we do have a lease on those. And so, you know, it's exciting to have stuff coming in and everything and we don't want to, you know, we're trying not to rob Peter to pay Paul.
Right.
For anything. So I can definitely bring it up. We have a meeting on Tuesday and see if there's anything that we can do matching fund wise and then we'd be happy to report back to the council or we can send it to Jennifer or however, however's easiest.
Right. Well, I guess I'm of the opinion that that money is yours and it, whether it's matching funds or not, we've set it aside and I think it needs to be yours as needed. I think we can take off the, the attachment of a matching grunt, grand, grant fund for it and make it just as, as needed. I don't know how the other council members feel about it.
Well, you still need, if the mower is going to be eight to $10,000, you obviously need more, but you also mentioned the sprinkler repair and maintenance because I know that's , I can't believe, is that covered with anything?
So on a, on a scale of like one to two, the lawnmower, the lawnmower is like one and everything else kind of just falls, falls below that. So that would be, that would be our first priority. The, the course is getting water and it's doing all right. But if we, if we are unable to, I guess, find matching funds of our own enough to equate to a mower, that's what we would use that contribution for because that's the next, you know, most meaningful expense, I guess, you could say to, to the course.
To another five. I guess I would refer to Counselor Ellathorpe about what the potential is of the, I mean, after two tries, is that kind of dead or is there any other resource?
You know, I appealed to the regional director. I went beyond our own, you know, the, the director that takes care of DOLA locally and we appealed to the regional director and he was pretty final in his decision. Apparently they had changed in the middle of the grant cycle, which is an odd thing, to not include rolling equipment or that something. That was his, and I think that's pretty final.
Okay.
From them this year unless they, I don't know. Some of the other folks I was working with were pretty determined that they were going to continue and I said, well, for right now, I think the golf course needs an answer one way or the other. And I feel like the regional director was pretty final in his answer. I don't think there's probably a potential there at this time.
And so was that for whether they classified us as a course or even as a park considering we do have walking trails and, and other opportunities for our stuff to do out there?
Yeah, I hit him with that, too.
Okay.
And, and he was pretty direct in his denial.
Okay.
So I just wanted to know, I'd done my best job and made my best effort for you and it was pretty definite. And apparently their parameters change and maybe next year it might be something different.
Okay.
But currently it, that's the answer for the additional matching funds.
Okay.
From them.
And that's fair.
Yeah.
And that's fair. I'm glad they, they gave you a straight answer.
Yeah, they were, they were pretty straight.
Personally, I was counting on that, that grant to cover that difference, which didn't seem like a complex process.
No.
Things change and you...
You know, I think this is a good example of why it's really hard as a government regarding, irregardless of where we're at, you can't count on grant money as a revenue source.
No.
You, you just can't. It, it doesn't happen that way. If you get it, it's an extra.
Yeah. And I understand that and I would be open to looking at another structure. I guess we'd have to have another work session.
Or fundraiser, maybe we can figure out a fundraiser or something. I don't know.
So we're, we've got a few of those planned. We've got a community, the community day planned. We've got, we're going to do some sort of, I guess you could say garage sale or some, some type of additional fundraiser. We'll discuss that a little further at our next meeting to get, to get dates down and get set up for, for, for those. We've talked about a number of different things, but we were kind of waiting to see what, what Counselor Ellathorpe was able to find with, with the grant.
Yeah, well, he was pretty final with that. So I, and like I said, I feel like the city has committed that $5,000 to you and we could hold it until you can figure out your additional funding or, I think we should certainly move to redirect that funding or redirect the wording of that so that it can be held until we decide if it needs to go for other maintenance issues or it can be held for a mower with the addition of some other funds.
Okay.
How long do you anticipate that mower holding up? Because it sounds a bit like, it sounds like you need a mower.
Yeah, it, it could, it could quit in 10 minutes from now. It's pretty, it's, it's pretty rough right now and we've, we've put about as many Band-Aids as we can on it and really stretched the life out of it. But yeah, it's, it's, it's hanging on as best it can.
So Counselor Ellathorpe, I'm just kind of curious on how long we're planning to kind of table this or until we talk to them or can we restructure this $5,000 to get it to them ASAP? I just don't know like what their needs are.
Right.
It sounds pretty imminent.
Right, I think we could make a motion to, to restructure that grant, that money that the city has devoted and then between you and Jennifer goes to your meetings.
Yes.
You, you guys can have the conversation about how best to use that funding.
Okay.
I think we need to release that grant commitment to it and then you guys can use it if you think you, we can find the other funding or something like that, at least you have it available.
Okay, that works. That works great for us.
Is that fair?
Thank you, thank you.
Okay, so I guess, do I need a motion on that?
Yes.
I'd like to move that we release the grant attachment status to the $5,000 that the city devoted to the golf course and allow them to use it for what the most eminent need is or at their discretion with, you know, Jenny and everyone kind of being the communicator to go between.
Seconded.
Thank you.
Thank you. I appreciate that. I appreciate that a lot.
We tried hard.
Hey, no, we appreciate all the help. Thank you, thank you again.
Doesn't mean we don't quit trying.
That's right, that's right. Well, yeah, if you find out anything new or anything, you know, let us know.
Right, okay.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you. Bye-bye.
You need a vote on that.
It's been moved and seconded that we remove the grant attachment to the $5,000 to give to the golf course. Is there any more discussion?
Do we have to mention that it's not going to be a matching grant anymore?
Yeah, I think we...
Yes.
That's what we'll be taking off as the matching grant.
The grant status.
Does that have to be in the motion? Yeah, it's pretty much...
No, you, she said that in the motion.
Nita?
Counselor Segola?
Aye.
Counselor Johnson?
Aye.
Counselor Ellathorpe?
Aye.
Mayor Becker?
Aye.
Motion carries?
Three Guys Farms pitching, starting a ruck club.
I want to know what are...
So Mayor, councilors, folks in the audience, you might be wondering what the...
Why do I have that?
It's over my back. So a couple of weeks, well, actually it's been about a month ago, I did an event in Colorado Springs called Go Ruck, which was basically 20 miles over the course of about 12 hours led by a Green Beret. It was a very humbling experience. There was myself and my girlfriend and then 14 folks I didn't know anything about until we all got together and carried a lot of weight and did a lot of PT and basically just got beat up a little bit over the course of those 12 hours with 40 pounds on our back. We carried logs, we carried water bags, we did a lot of fun stuff together. And it was a humbling experience in part because, you know, here I was a civilian with a Green Beret taking charge and basically telling us, hey, this is how you become a team. This is how you work together. This is how you accomplish goals together. Not only that, but I got to lead my team as a team leader. Every person in that event basically got to experience being a team leader, especially if they were new to rucking. And in that experience, I got to lead people who were mostly either military or ex-military in doing some really tough work together. And so I thought to myself, was like, hey, this is pretty cool. What if I were to bring this to this community in Monavista? What if I were to propose starting what they call a ruck club? So Go Ruck is an organization that was started by a Green Beret. Basically, all the people that are involved in that organization are former special forces from the Army, from the Navy, from Marines, you name it. There are special forces, people that are involved in that organization. And the ruck clubs that they promote are basically started by communities such as this one and they're run by folks within the community. And pretty much the whole purpose of it is to get out there into the city and walk together and enjoy the city and also do a little bit of physical exercise together and grow as a team and grow as a community. You know, this thing on my back right now is, you know, about 30, 40 pounds. You get a group of people wearing these, some folks will think that we're weird. That's okay. I'm happy to be called weird. I've always been a little weird. And I'm happy to get a bunch of weirdos together with me to do it. So I've actually asked Nita and she kindly put up a video about rucking and about starting a ruck club. So I'd like the audience to watch this. Is there something?
Maybe not even GRTs. Getting out there, a ruck club is a group of runners, GRTs, maybe not even GRTs, getting out there to share the love under our loggers, sharing the love under our lucks.
Well, a ruck club is just a group of people who enjoy getting out and rucking together. They go out, they'll spend time, you know, getting a few marbles a few times a week.
It was really just a matter of meeting people in the area, people around Austin who had done other ruck events and it kind of just naturally came together and started to hang out as a club.
But what we decided to do is try to get a group of like-minded people together so that we can go out for, for rucks together, do various training together or even do social events, go grab burgers and beers or tacos and just sort of hang out and interact as friends.
Sort of doing more events together, training for additional ruck events and also some social events as well.
Just getting out and doing stuff in the community with a certain kind of work with the hospital or drop in.
So been part of this ruck club since we moved down to Texas. When I first joined, I wanted to do, I had to bring the training.
Stuff that I was seeing as part of the NorCal rucking club to, to the Austin area. I think the core of that is the intent to get people out rucking.
I run a weekly ruck in Port Orange, Daytona area and we get together, we do three, four miles and we grab a couple beers at the end and those are some of my closest buds.
I got out of the military as a reservist and I had, needed to fill this void. The camaraderie is great within the rucking clubs. Every club is so amazing. When I first moved to Texas, I didn't know anyone and that's kind of how I met all my friends out here was through joining the club and rucking and meeting them at ruck events.
Meeting new people outside of what you're normally used to, you know, meet a bunch of weirdos out here, so it's a good time.
So starting out, it was very, people would just randomly post, I'm going to ruck today. Does anyone want to come? We're going to ruck Sunday. Does anybody want to come?
So start a ruck club, I think the biggest thing is start reaching out to the different groups in the area and really getting the members to help spread that word. So in the first couple of different rucks, we actually kind of challenged some of the members, bring someone new. And then from there, the word kind of spread.
We're out there a lot by ourselves to start off with and it kind of just built, it built on.
I did a lot of bouncing around, different ideas, different sorts of events, different sorts of locations, just to see what people would bite on and what kinds of things people wanted to do. Now, I think the biggest and best step has been to set up an actual schedule. Wednesday we'll be here, Monday we'll be here. Once a week, we do a long trail ruck and we do a breakfast at the end, so...
Another thing is to get out there and always, always get out there, even if you, you don't have a plan, if you have a plan, whatever, get out there and ruck or do a workout, even if by yourself.
I think the important thing is saying where you're going to be and just being accountable to being there. If people know you're there, they'll come.
Really, anyone interested in being outdoors, having fun, carrying stuff, we really kind of welcome everybody. Doesn't matter the physical fitness level.
I think that anyone can join a ruck club. I mean, there is kids that are six, seven, eight, nine, 10 years old that are joining. There, there are people in our group that are 65, 75, and 85. Anyone can literally join a ruck club. If you want to be outside and be around like-minded people, join up. It's great.
You know, community fitness rucking. So basically the idea is out rucking is you carry a backpack with some weight in it. There's a person with an American flag. It's a good set of eyes for the community. And I actually talked a little bit with Chief Burrows Grant before this meeting and I was very honored to have his support. I understand that you're a Green Beret, so if I can have a couple over here, if you don't mind, let's put you on the spot.
No, you didn't. Alex reached out to me and for just the reasons he said, you know, I have some interest in the outdoors and the rucking and the community and I think this is kind of threefold. I think it's a good community health aspect, maybe even a safety aspect. maybe even a safety aspect, and then just to kind of maybe to bridge some gaps. You never know who's going to show up at an event like this, and I think that's pretty neat. And that's a lot of miles. One of our final exercises for our assessment and selection was a 26-mile ruck. And I can attest that that's not easy to do. We had plenty of weight on our backs. So, it's a really cool event, and I do think that maybe that's what Montevista needs, is always saying something else. Well, what's the next thing? Well, you can carry a little backpack from the time you can walk to the time you can't walk. And I think that's pretty cool, too. So, who knows, might get involved, how this might even kind of tie into maybe something about citizens on patrol and what they might be able to see and do, and maybe it changes the landscape of our community when you never know what kind of band of weirdos, is that what they said? Band of weirdos is coming down your alley with a bunch of rucks on. I definitely support it, and I even told them that we would, I'd find a way for us to get involved, not only from my personal volunteer, but maybe even from a professional organization, the police department, kind of working with them, helping them carry the flag to speak and literally as well. I'm all for it, so I'm curious what they'll say.
Yeah, so, you know, my, my ask of the council is potentially a place where we can start this club. You know, I'd be very committed in being there on a certain date, you know, a certain time, maybe doing this once a month to start, maybe progressing to a little bit more often as we start to gain traction. You know, I hope that we can get folks in the community involved, you know, and do the kind of stuff that was described by myself and in this video. And again, Chief, thank you very much for your support. So, what do you all think?
I think it's a great idea.
I think it's a great idea. I would do that. I would ruck.
Sweet.
I would do that. I would do that. I would just follow along and I can walk miles. You wouldn't believe it, but I can walk miles. So, I think it's a great idea. What kind of a building are you looking for? Just a meeting place?
Really, a room, right? So, a room where I can say, okay, on this day, on this time, you know, every month, we'll get the group together. If it's just me to begin with, I don't care. I'll be there.
Right.
And then eventually, you know, people will start showing up. You know, I'd be happy to start a Facebook page for it. This organization, Go Ruck, you know, they're interested in supporting ruck clubs. They don't do that for, you know, they don't charge us for that. I mean, yeah, they have some, some interest in selling their equipment and all that kind of stuff, but, you know, I don't represent them. I represent myself and, you know, perhaps Three Guys Farms, which is a conservative, is my business partner. You know, it's, it's really just a way to get the community involved in something awesome, and that's, that's what we're about. So, yeah, so to answer your question, sorry, I read that a little bit. A room would be, maybe, that we can use, you know, at a specific day, a specific time, everybody will.
As a leading space. Any ideas?
Counselor, I'd be willing to offer up the new courtroom for that.
What more could you ask for?
The new courtroom.
Oh, right on.
Which is right over here on the other side of this building. That'd be a great launching space.
Awesome.
That'd be great. Thank you.
We can have our first event in one. How's that?
Perfect.
That's all good? Yeah?
Yeah, I like the idea.
I like the idea, and thank you, Nita, for offering the courtroom. I think that would be kind of a nice space to do that in. It's a beautiful new room and kind of centrally located, and lots of folks know where it is. So, I think that's a good idea.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Do we need a motion or?
I don't think you need a motion.
Just a head nod?
Yeah, and.
I would say, ruck away.
Ruck on.
All right. Thank you all for your support. Appreciate it.
Thanks, Alex.
Alex, you can just get in touch with me and we can plan whatever you need. You're welcome.
Oh, I, I would do that. Stuff a few dogs in it. Okay. Ms. Becker?
Jennifer Becker, Food Bank Information Donation Request. Thanks, guys.
Cory's my son, Igor's their partner in them. Yes. Cory's like 6'5", about 280, like, yeah. He could probably carry a human on his back, though. I'm just saying. Good evening. My name is Jennifer Becker. I am the Director of the Montevista Emergency Food Bank, here to talk to something that's a little bit near and dear to my heart. I personally took over the role of Director last year in July, and I've been volunteering at the Food Bank for about six years. I sat on the board for about three. My father is the one that kind of pushed me into it. He's been there for, I'm guessing, about 15 years. If I'm wrong, sorry, Dad. So, I want to put a presentation together for you guys this evening. A lot of people are really unaware of the effects of hunger and how much it impacts our own community. A little bit history on our food bank. The venture for the Montevista Food Bank began on July 7, 1984. The St. Stevens Episcopal Church on Washington Street donated the original building for $1 a year lease. Eight different churches helped sponsor the food bank with food, monetary donations, but our original building was only 384 square foot. We quickly realized the need for a bigger building. So, plans went underway for a brand-new 1,700-square-foot facility. The Montevista Rotary Club donated $1,000 in seed money in 1998 to construct a new building. The Episcopal Church was awarded a $19,500 grant, and the Montevista Rotary and Montevista Quanis raised an amazing $65,000. The dream of a new building became a reality. With an outpouring of community support, the new building was opened in March of 2000. Our open floor plan, new walk-in coolers, updated freezers and refrigerator allow us to better serve the ever-increasing demands for assistance. So, what exactly does hunger look like in Colorado? I've included it in your packets, and you can find these stats on a website called Hunger Free Colorado. I'd like to just briefly hit on a few points from the website. Nearly 1 in 11 people in Colorado struggle with hunger, not always having enough money for food. More than 1 in 10 people in Colorado struggle financially, living below the federal poverty line. This includes 1 in 8 kids, with those under the age of 5 most likely to live in poverty. Nearly 1 in 7 people in Colorado may not always know when or where they will get their next meal. In a room of 50 older adults, 3 of them are facing hunger in Colorado and are forced to make choices between purchasing groceries or medications. About 21,000 veterans in Colorado live in households that participate in food stamps at some point during a 12-month period. That never blew me away. On a yearly basis, our food bank alone serves approximately 2,000 people. This is about 500 households, including children, seniors, and veterans. That is over 10% of our community's population. On average, the food bank spends around $25,000 to $30,000 annually on just food alone. That doesn't include overhead costs such as phone, internet, bags, and supplies. The church does let us use the building for nothing, but we are responsible to pay certain parts of that building. Though we do run, under La Puente, we are almost entirely self-run. We do get some help with assistance, help and assistance with holiday food in the way of turkeys and hams from them. Otherwise, we run on the amazing donations both in food, hygiene, and monetary from various individuals, service organizations, churches, and businesses. But we've recently been faced with a dilemma. Our main food supplier has ended our contract due to going corporate. We got amazing prices from them, and I've been working diligently to find a source that will at least somewhat be comparable, so far with little luck. Based on what we are paying for food, it costs us around $250 a year to feed just one household of 4 people for the allotted 6 yearly visits that we give them. And 4 people is, is low. I would say, I would have to look at my actual reports, but we're probably running 30 to 40% of the people that we see on a, on a daily basis have more than 4 people in their household. A lot of those are multi-generational families, too. We just started in January using a new program called Empower that we're running under La Puente, and I love it because it gives me a better idea of the demographics that we're reaching and the people that we're helping. I was shocked at the number of grandparents that are raising grandchildren, aunts and uncles that are raising grandchildren, adult children that are living with their parents with their own children. Sorry. So, this, we allow 6 visits per year. What we, what we pay in the $250 per year does not include our special giveaways that we do at Thanksgiving, Christmas. We always make sure everybody gets a little extra for Christmas and Thanksgiving. If our food costs rise by the 20 to 30% increase that I'm predicting, we may be forced to give less food. This could be crippling for most of our families as they are forced with higher living costs. Imagine, if you will, being forced to be making the choice between feeding your family or paying your utility bill, feeding your family or putting gas in your vehicle to get to your job. So, tonight I come to you with a request. If council would commit to a possible yearly donation to sponsor 1 or possibly 2 families, it would be amazing. Raising food costs have not only hit our families drastically, but have obviously set us back as well. I would also like to ask personally for some support from the community. I've included in your packets, and I've got several extras here. It's a list of food and certain things that we give out on a regular basis. We, we give out certain items based on family size, and then we have additional items that we give out on request, and that includes hygiene items. We also take in coats and blankets. So, if anyone wants one of those, I have those here. We're obviously looking for volunteers as well. Right now, I have an amazing group of people that are working under me on a, we're open Tuesdays and Fridays, and I've got a great crew that are very dependable. But I'm planning as a new director over the next few months to run some different food drives, fundraisers, those kind of things, and I can always use volunteers for those. And I leave you with a simple yet powerful quote from Mother Teresa. If you can't feed 100 people, then just feed 1. Thank you for your time and consideration. Do you have any questions?
I was gonna ask you about fundraisers. I think you touched on that at the end, so that's something I enthusiastically support. I haven't seen, there's a lot going on, I'm sure, but I haven't seen and I'm sure be willing to be involved.
Right. You know, I'm gonna admit that my first year was a little rough, just getting my feet on the ground, volunteering. And when I say I volunteered at the food bank for six years, I was a standby. It was kind of a, because I sat on the board, they just called me when they needed me. I had no clue what I was getting myself into. It's literally been, it's a very, very satisfying, very gratifying job, but it's really hard, and I call it a job. I'm not paid for my position, by the way. I'm paid in thank yous. It's time paid. But now, we do a couple big ones, and that seems to be the only focus that the food bank has always done, is a couple big ones around the holidays. There's Make a Difference Day, which was our largest since it began. I was pretty proud of that. I put some ads in the paper, that kind of stuff. And then we do a couple small ones during the holidays with, like, Bill Metz does what they call the Monster March, and they collect food from the kids for a week and then deliver it to us. I think we need to do more. I have some ideas in my hat that I'm going to start hitting up businesses and seeing if, within businesses, people would be willing to do food drives or food and monetary drives. Honestly, money is, is kind of where it's at. Getting food is fantastic. Getting money is even better because then we can allot it to what we need. Like, right now, I'm almost out of tomato sauce, and I don't know where I'm going to get it from yet. Jack's Market in Del Norte was my main food supplier. And they just, they were amazing to work with. They gave us our food right about 10 to 15% of the cost. And I've gotten some prices from a few different wholesalers, and I'm looking at a huge increase on some of the stuff, so. A little scary. A little scary. You know, we've, we've got money in the bank. I'm not going to lie to you. The food bank has money in the bank, but anything can go wrong at any time. You know, our walk-in is huge, and if our walk-in goes out, we're in big trouble. I had somebody speaking to me from La Puente. She came down, and their biggest concern at La Puente, and what they're preparing for right now is in the way of a disaster. You know, we're all just one step away from hunger, and we don't even realize it. You know, if we had major flooding right here in the Rio Grande County that wiped out half the homes, I don't think I could feed everybody at the point that I'm at right now. And so, that is something else that I really need to start looking at is, is some, to be a little bit more prepared for emergency situations, too, so. But now, I'm, I have some plans. If anyone else wants to head up some fundraisers, I am more than happy to help you out, so.
Well, I just have to say, having taught for 30 years and heading up the homeless program at the school system, homelessness in, in our county is huge, and I'm not sure everybody really understands and realizes how many homeless or couch-surfing families there are just in Montevista. And I also coordinated the backpack program, which sent backpacks home full of foods with, for, with kids on the weekend, because oftentimes, weekends and holidays, there's no food and, or, or little food, not enough. I also push those farmers with CPAC, trying to get them, and then we did a competition to see who could donate the most money last year. I'm not sure how much they came up with, but there are things like that in this community, and those guys are really good to contribute. I'm all in favor of, I don't know how much money we have in our fund. Jenny? And that's until the end of the year? When does that renew? We've been pretty tight with our funds, haven't we?
Like I said, to, to, based on the numbers of what we give out during their visits, it's written $250 per family, so.
Right. And you limit it to 6 visits?
It's 6 visits per year plus your 2 holidays.
Is that negotiable ever? I'm sure you give out food that's not accounted for.
Yeah, I'm a little bit of a sucker, so, yes.
I'm sure you do.
I mean, if we, if we have circumstances where they've used their visits and I just know that they've exhausted all their other options. Now, one really cool thing about working under La Puente is they have a lot more money than us, so. Actually, in the, I'm in the works right now, trying to get in on a little bit more of what they have to offer as far as grants and those kind of things. But they are, right now, contemplating, they are considering allowing their, their people to come in once, once a month. We can't do that. We just don't have the funds to do that. But they have told me that if somebody uses their visits at our food bank, they can go to Alamosa. That's a great thing about this Empower program that we use, is it allows us to track visits between the 2 food banks. And so, if they pull their name up and see that they've used their 6 visits here, they'll give them another 6 visits in Alamosa. But that's not always easy if you live here. A lot of my clients don't have transportation. You'd be amazed how many people will literally take only part of the food or won't take the potatoes because they have no way of getting it to their house. And for safety reasons, we don't offer delivery services, so it's, it's really unfortunate. I've had moms come in, single moms that have come in and loaded up their children's stroller with food. So, going to Alamosa isn't always an option. So, we do have extra stuff that we keep kind of aside in case there are an emergency situations where they need more food. I've always got instant potatoes, and I will tell you, the potato farmers in this community are amazing. I have 5 on a, on a rotation and 1 phone call, and they deliver, they deliver potatoes to me, no questions asked, so that's amazing. And they're great supporters during the holidays. During the holidays, we do really well.
Right. They're great supporters with money and, yeah.
Yeah. You know, it's, it's, it's a tough situation. I didn't real, like I said, I didn't realize it until I really dove into this, and I grew up kind of the cookie cutter life. I, my friends used to tease me that my mom was June Cleaver and asked if she used to vacuum in her heels pearls. She didn't, I promise. But I'd never knew or understood what hunger was. We always had food on the table. My dad was a veteran, and so he had that extra VA check, and, and he also worked at a bank. Most people know my dad. He worked at the bank for like 30 some years. We weren't rich, but we certainly weren't hungry. But somebody very special in my life, who's sitting up there, knows what it is to be hungry, and it's, it's tough, so. So, I thought, why not? I'm going to come to, I don't know that the food bank has ever come to council and, and proposed some kind of donation, so.
Right.
I'm certainly be in favor of the higher figure that you're asking for. I don't know how the council, there's obviously not a lot available, but this is, if that is higher priority, is that a good management?
I was shocked when I looked at the number, at 10% of our community.
Well, and actually, if you want to know the truth, working in the school system, I think the number is bigger than that. Quite a lot bigger.
There's a lot of people that have a really hard time coming in. I see that a lot. You know, it's a very humbling experience for a lot of people to have to come in and ask for, for food.
Right. Well, and, and extended families living in one structure, and it's pretty difficult to put a, a good number on it. But I'm certainly in favor of, of the higher amount. I'm wishing we could find a way to do more or give more because that's how I am, but. What do you think, Victor?
People need to eat, you know?
Right.
My mom had a daycare for a while, and I feel bad for some of those kids, you know? They don't eat anywhere else except maybe at somebody else's house.
There, there are statistics out there that say a lot of children, the only time that they actually get a healthy meal that benefits their body is, is at school.
That's true.
It's a really, really, you know, and, and a lot of people have a misconception about food stamps, and I will be, I will be the first to admit that I used to as well. You don't get as much in food stamps as what you think you do. You really don't. This, this Hunger Free Colorado website is, is very interesting to, to look at because it gives you stats on Colorado as a whole, and then it gives you stats on the United States as well. Don't donate money to them, though. Donate it to us. If there's a place you could donate, don't, they don't give us anything, so. But no, I, I mean, if you guys need some time to table it, we're, that's, I totally understand.
No, I don't think we need time. I, I was just trying to figure out a way we could squeeze out more than your requested 500 if we have 2,300 in there. 500, if we have 2,300 in there.
I think we can leave that open for the next...
Maybe we can add to that 500 as we see how our budget goes?
We'll take money, anytime.
I know. It doesn't, it's not a one-time thing. We could commit to the 500 now and then see what happens over the course of time, and maybe commit some more as we go forward.
Jenny, is there any other organizations, anybody that you know that might be coming to request funds as well?
I know...
Prime Stoppers.
Prime Stoppers, Vol and Hero, got good tweets in the community from last year. It was one that came to you guys last year, right after I started.
Oh, the Mokey, the...
I mean, I don't know if they'll be back, but that's kind of what we've done in the past.
And with it being summer, too, you'll see a lot more requests that'll start coming in as well.
Right. Well, I think if we could move to commit the 500, and then as we see what loosens up with our budget, there's certainly the option for more in time. What do you guys think?
I agree with that.
That would be amazing.
Second that, if you want.
I move that we commit 500 with the option in time.
All right.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that we donate $500 out of the city council fund to the Montevista Food Bank. Is there any more discussion? I will abstain from the vote. Nita?
Aye.
Counselor Johnson?
Aye.
Counselor Elatharp?
Aye.
And Mayor Becker has sustained from this vote. With three votes, this motion does carry.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you, Jennifer.
Okay, we have citizen comments. City Council welcomes your unscheduled comments. Please limit comments to three minutes. Council will not take action at this same meeting. Please state your name, write it down.
Margot Alexander. And I am shocked at the report Jen gave. I didn't realize that was that much. And what I'm up here, after hearing the requests and the situations people are in in this community, I have heard about, and, well, let me put it this way, I don't know how these things work, so pardon me if I'm way off base, but I know there's been the talk about changing the city logo. To me, that is fluff in the sky. I don't see why we need to waste money on that when we have important issues in this city to take care of. This kind of situation, the storm drains need work, we need a new sweeper, I mean, and like I said, I don't understand how things work in the community this way, but I just wanted to give my humble opinion that I think going for a city logo and the expense in changing everything is just not worth it. And the other thing I would like to say is, when we have big events, like we had the event at Home Lake for Memorial Day, that it was a fantastic event. The people who didn't go, I'm sorry, they didn't go, 'cause it was well-done, and just, it was, made me cry. It was patriotic to the nth degree, and just great. And I just, I just want to put out, if you are able, would it be, if one of you guys would show up at some of these events? I didn't see a council member there, and some of the other events that happened in the city. It'd be nice if I'd see somebody. You know, I know we're all busy, but show up if you can, and I do appreciate when you are there, because it's awesome. You can shake hands and say, hey, how you been doing? And what are you up to? And can we help in any way? So please take that for what it's worth, and thank you.
Thank you, Margot. Any other citizen comments?
Okay, public hearing, special use application, Excel Energy, installation of three non-commercial wireless communication antennas on top of a monopole.
Mr. Mayor, you will need to adjourn as council and open the public hearing with the city attorney.
Adjourn, meeting, temporary recess, or is there...
Recede.
Council recess. Mr. Review.
All right. This is a special review use application by Excel.
Yes.
Okay. And we're on, I think we're on, so. And this is with Excel Energy at 130 Washington for installation of three non-commercial wireless communication antennas on top of a monopole. I think just generally for the council's information, we did have a public hearing with the Planning Commission and the Board of Adjustments for a variance application, which was approved by the Board of Adjustment, and the Planning Commission did recommend that the special use application be approved. We are required to have a public hearing, and we'll have a few folks, I think, from public service tell us what it's all about. Nita, generally, maybe I'll call you, and if you would just give us a little bit of a history on it, nothing too crazy, 'cause I think these folks usually are pretty well-prepared from the Planning Commission meeting.
Okay. So, Excel Energy Public Service Company has presented themselves with a special review use in a industrial-zoned area of the city of Montevista located at 130 Washington. They would like to install a non-commercial wireless communication antennas, three of those, on top of a monopole. They did get a variance approved by the Board of Adjustment to reach the maximum height of 125 feet for the monopole. I will go ahead and turn it over to Excel Energy. They do have a presentation.
Whoever's gonna start off, if you'd state your name and what your position is with or association with Excel, and then if you want to proceed.
Great. Good evening, councilors and mayor. My name's Jackson Fagan. I'm a siting and land rights agent with Public Service Company of Colorado. We're a publicly regulated electric and gas utility, regulated by the Colorado Public Utilities Commission. We're also, we do business under the name of Excel Energy, which is the name most people commonly know us as. I'm here tonight to present the proposed Montevista Field Area Network project on a piece of property that we own in the city of Montevista. The project is essentially a steel monopole with antennas on top of it that will support our internal communications infrastructure. It will not be used for any commercial application. It will strictly support our internal infrastructure. So, and I'm here to request your approval of a special use review. So with me tonight are my colleagues, Jim Gold. He can answer any technical or engineering questions you might have about the project, and Carrie Halick, who's gonna give the bulk of the presentation. So, thanks for having us.
All right, let's go next. If you'd state your name and then your association with Excel or public service.
Sure.
Thank you.
My name's Carrie Halick. I'm with a company called EPG, and I'm working on behalf of Excel Energy. And so I'm here today to kind of walk you through this project and just give you a little bit more information about what Excel is proposing to do. So the name of the project is called a Field Area Network Project. The acronym there is FAN. And it is a wireless, non-communication, non-commercial communication facility. Like Jackson said, it has nothing to do with cellular service. This is strictly for better communication to the electric grid that Public Service Company runs in this area. So it connects, this FAN tower, or this Field Area Network Project, will connect with the control center, which is in the Denver metro area, and communicate information. The way that will happen is intelligent devices will be put on the distribution system, which are the smaller wood poles that you see in your community. And then there's gonna be advanced metering infrastructure, where they can actually read meters remotely. And the benefit there is, they'll be able to see anything going on on the grid real time. They don't have to wait for people to call in and say, hey, my power isn't out, can you please send somebody out? They'll be able to look on a computer screen and see if the power's out, and maybe even identify what the issue is. If it's a switch or a fault that they can reset remotely, they would do that, and if they can't, they would send somebody out to physically go look at it. It's also gonna provide enhanced control of the grid, which I'll explain further in the presentation. And we're doing a lot of these FAN towers. There's about 60 in Colorado, and we've permitted about 40. So, so the next slide, I don't know if I'm in the way, really. But the next slide kind of shows the entire system as a whole. So what it shows is, on the right side, it shows the homes, and they, thank you, they have these devices on them where they communicate with the distribution system, which then in turn communicates with this tower, the Field Area Network, which then communicates back to the control center. So that's kind of the big picture. And then the next slide kind of breaks it down, 'cause I think the first slide's a little overwhelming. So there, you can see the homes, and with the intelligent devices on the distribution system. And then that feeds into the network of the distribution that already exists. And then that distribution system would now be able to communicate with this Field Area Network Tower. So this slide, I guess, to just clarify, this is the part of the project that we're looking for approval on tonight. All the other components are in other various stages. And then the next slide, you can see that's, it's kind of hard to read this, but the point of this is, is once it gets to the control center, they have all this information, there's a lot that they can do with it. So, the next slide, so there's a lot of benefits to your community for public safety. Like I said, when you have, you know, a bad storm, and say you have an outage, rather than having to call Excel, in theory, what would happen is, with this new communication technology, it would alert somebody at the control center. And like I said, if they can't reset something remotely, or do anything remotely, they will do that, and if they can't, they'll send somebody out immediately. So it will shorten the time of the outages considerably because of the new technology, because you're not waiting on somebody to report it, and then a patrolman to go out and try to find the problem. And like I said, they can not only remotely reset switches, but they can, they can also head off, if they see kind of something strange going on in the system where they think the power may go out, they can often proactively prevent an outage, just by even, by being able to remotely look at everything that's going on in the distribution system. And then lastly, it allows for more integration of renewable energy, because now there's two-way communication, so they can see kind of the way that the energy's flowing on the grid, and if it allows, they can, you know, increase the renewable energy resources. So the next slide shows a number, like I said, we're working on a number of these statewide, and in this region, there are projects planned in Alamosa, Antonito, and Port Garland. Not shown is at the Moffett Substation and in Ponte Junction. So, it's a large network of projects. And the next slide shows the general location of where this is located. It would be located on a vacant parcel that Public Service Company already owns, and it's kind of on the north side of Montevista, and it's north of Asequia and east of Washington Street. So the parcel that Public Service Company owns is industrial, and all the parcels surrounding that industrial parcel are also industrial. To the north, there's a large building, and it's owned industrial. To the east, there's an auto body business. To the south, there's some large buildings with silos. And then to the west, across from adjoining West Washington Drive, it's undeveloped, and then there's also a large building on that side of the street. What that image doesn't show is, there's also a number of other communication towers right in the same area, which I'll get to a photo of that further in here. So this is the site plan of where the monopole would be located within the existing property. So the existing property is a rectangular property that's already fenced. What we would do is add a small fenced area within that rectangular property and add, like a neutral-colored flint, I'm sorry, neutral-colored slats that would kind of shield the base a little bit, which was a suggestion of the city of Montevista. It meets all the required setbacks, and as mentioned, we did apply for a variance, because in this industrial district, the height limit is 50 feet, we're proposing 125 feet. So next slide kind of explains why does it have to be so high? Basically, the higher you can be in this general vicinity, the more meters you can reach. So what we did is, we simulated a feasibility study, showing that if, we only built it to 75 feet, this is a little hard to see on this slide, yeah, you can see the three antennas represent three different colors there. If you build it to 75 feet, you reach about 11,141 meters, whereas if you can build it to 125 feet, you pick up an additional 4,713 meters. So all of those now could, you know, benefit from this technology in having the shorter outages and the better communication with the network. So the next slide shows what will it look like. It's a three antenna array. Like we said, it's actually 120 feet with a five-foot lightning rod, so the overall height is 125 feet. The wind design load is for 115 mile-per-hour sustained in 190 mile-per-hour gusts, and it's a self-supporting structure, so there's no guy wires or anything like that. And then this shows an existing, one of the towers that has already been constructed, so you can kind of get a sense of what it looks like. It's a pretty narrow design, when you talk about communication towers. It's galvanized, which is kind of a grayish color, which we think blends best in this kind of setting. And I don't know if you can see it on that, but you can see it maybe on the next. The top has the 29-inch antennas. So we did a photo simulation, and this photo simulation was taken from a factory in Prospect and Broadway. And so this first slide will just show you what it looks like out there right now. So you can kind of see, this shows a number of communication towers that are already in the vicinity. And then if you go to the next slide, you can see what the tower would look like with respect to everything that's already out there. So, there is an existing communication tower just to the east, that's about 200 feet tall. It's a little deceiving in this picture, because it is further back in the background. There's also an existing communication tower to the south, it's approximately 76 feet tall. And then on the street there in Washington, there's an existing electric distribution pole that's about 38 feet tall. So, there's a lot of tall stuff out there. Like I said, what you can't see is, there's also a couple other communication towers in the same vicinity, back to the west. So, the last slide is basically why we're here. This sort of project triggers a special use, special review use, and as mentioned, we also applied for a variance, which was approved at the last meeting. That concludes my presentation, and I guess I'll open it to questions.
Is there any potential there? I mean, there's a reason why there's a limit, I guess it's probably just aesthetics, I don't know. But is there any possibility of communication interference in the area you're next door, and you're calling somebody across town?
Let me have our technical specialist answer that one.
Okay.
If you would state your name for the record as well, okay?
Hello, my name's Jim Gold, I'm a planning engineer with Excel Energy. In your question there, FCC regulates all the spectrum there. So we have to register with the FCC once we get through planning zoning and so forth like that. So they'll determine if there is somebody on the same band frequency, we can work with them to change our frequency so we won't interfere with them. But as of right now, we haven't seen anything out there.
Any other questions of any of the council for?
And you're saying that too, not to, oh, you said there was one out there doing it, with the same kind of structure without the guy wires?
No, that's a self-support tower. And the one that's there, that's, the one to the south, that is a monopole that's similar.
Okay, so you can do that?
What's that?
Make it stand, self-supporting.
Oh, yeah. Absolutely. Absolutely.
All right.
I don't have any questions.
Do you folks have any additional information? Or is there anyone else that wishes to speak either for or against the project from the All right, I think we'll close this public hearing for XL, and council can either wait till we have the other hearing, if you want to vote on that maybe. Makes some sense to go through the other one? Okay. All right. All right, let's close that one, and let's call up the special review use application with Josiah and Fred Martinez for 740 Monroe, and their ideas to place an 1,800 square-foot manufactured home on a permanent foundation. The, this matter did come before the Planning Commission, and there was a recommendation for approval so long as they met all the building and requirements of the City of Montevista. So Nita, just generally, if, let's call you initially, and then we'll call the applicants, but just to let the council know what generally we're looking at doing here.
Good evening again. The applicants, Josiah and Fred Martinez, came forward with a special review use application that was completed to place an 1,800 square-foot manufactured home on a permanent foundation at the property located at 470 Monroe Street. Staff did review all of the application contents and recommended approval to the Planning Commission. Planning Commission has reviewed this and has recommended approval to City Council.
All right. Do we have the applicants here, Fred or Josiah Martinez, that wish to speak to this? If you would state your name for the record?
My name's Freddie Martinez. I am the applicant. I'm speaking on behalf of my son as well. We are seeking approval here today for an 1,800 square-foot home. It's a 30 by 60 manufactured home to be placed at 740 Monroe Street. I will be, my wife and I will be the co-owners, because after you look at things logistically, you find out that there are more costs associated than anticipated. So that's why we will be co-owners to the home. We've gone through the first stage, as was stated, through the Planning Commission that moved us here for this hearing today. Currently, my son, his fiance, my granddaughter live in Alamos County. I'd like the opportunity for you to afford us to bring him back to Rio Grande County. I am a Montevista native. I've lived here my entire life. I'd like to have the rest of my family here in Montevista as well. So what I'm seeking is for approval, your approval, to have that approved so we can have him come back here to Montevista.
Now, Mr. Martinez, you, there was some question at the Planning Commission about the unit that you were going to buy. Were you able to check into that in terms of placing that unit on a foundation, or?
Yes, I was. So one of the questions that surfaced was that they were under the impression that the home was going to be left on a chassis or a hitch, and that it would be exposed or whatnot with the house, the home would not be placed on a permanent foundation. I didn't have the quote that I received from our contractor stating that it would be on a permanent foundation. I have that here today if I can approach someone here and give that to you.
And you certainly are prepared to meet all the regulations of the city to get this home put on, is that right?
I am. I've actually obtained quotes from XL, the City of Montevista, from, right there, JJ actually has at least four or five different quotes to hook up water, sewer, and electrical as well, plus the foundation on there. So I have obtained that. We haven't, it's, they're just quotes, because we need to first have approval from City Council.
And you've got plenty of room to park vehicles and that kind of thing?
Parking has been established. It's my knowledge parking, there's two parking areas on the street, and everybody on the street of Monroe parks in their property, not on the street. And we have plenty of parking. It's 150 by 150 lot.
And just so the council is aware, you've probably talked to neighbors, and did anybody have any issues with this?
So anyone within a 300 square-foot radius was sent notification that we were attempting to put a manufactured home in the neighborhood. To my knowledge, we have not received anybody who's opposed us placing a manufactured home in our neighborhood.
Okay. There was one.
Just to let council know as well, I did actually receive two letters from neighboring properties that were in favor of this project.
I don't recall anyone at the Planning Commission meeting that objected at that point, so just for the information of the council. All right, what's your timeframe in terms of getting, once, if there is approval, what kind of timeframe would it take to get it?
Well, first, we would need, if we receive approval today, then we need to actually have an appraisal done. So we've already been pre-approved by the Bank of San Luis Valley Federal. So once we get that and have the appraisal completed, then that'll actually get things rolling and things in motion. We were hoping by July, or mid-July, but at this point, because it's June, we're probably looking at probably mid-August.
Okay. All right. Do you have anything else you wish to present before the council?
Just to reassure City Council that the home is not on a chassis, does not have a hitch attached. I did speak to the manufacturing company. They placed the home on a flatbed trailer, they bring it here, and like you can see, there has to be craned onto the home and placed onto the foundation.
Do any of the council have any questions for Mr. Martinez? All right, thank you. Do you have anything else you wish to present?
No, not at this time.
All right. Is there anyone else in the audience that wishes to speak for or against the application? All right, we'll go ahead and close the public hearing and then turn it back over to the council. Thank you.
One at a time, yeah, I think one at a time would be.
I would, I would move to accept a special review use application for XL Energy, 130 Washington Street, and the installation of three non-commercial wireless communication antennas on top of a monopole.
Second.
To approve the special review use application for XL Energy, 130 Washington Street, installation of three non-commercial wireless communication antennas on top of a monopole. More discussion? Nita?
Counselor Ellathorpe?
Aye.
Counselor Johnson?
Aye.
Counselor Segola?
Aye.
Mayor Becker?
Aye.
Motion carries?
I just had Josiah in high school. What on earth happened to those years? I just had you in school. I would like to move in favor of the special review use application for Josiah and Fred F. Martinez for 740 Monroe, placing an 1,800 square-foot manufactured home on a permanent foundation, and welcome you back to Montevista, get you home where you belong.
And I would second that.
To approve the special review use application for Josiah and Fred F. Martinez for 740 Monroe, placing an 1,800 square-foot manufactured home on a permanent foundation. Is there any more discussion?
I just had a quick question on one of these forms, we've got 744 Monroe, is this all together?
744 Monroe, yes.
Okay, so that's just a drawing. That's fine.
Nita?
Counselor Johnson?
Aye.
Counselor Segola?
Aye.
Counselor Ellathorpe?
Aye.
Mayor Becker?
Aye.
Motion carries?
Congratulations, guys.
Yeah, that's awesome. You family new home, right on.
Beautiful, beautiful, quite a spot.
Hey, thank you. Take that baby home. She must take after your fiance. Be quiet.
She does know you.
Good night, guys.
Intergovernmental agreement between CDOT and City of Montevista to install ALPR systems on CDOT's ITS infrastructure.
So good evening, council. The Resolution 04-2019 is a resolution of the City of Montevista approving an agreement with the Colorado Department of Transportation known as CDOT to affix or install or maintain the automated license, sorry, I can't read this evening, automated license plate readers system on CDOT transportation system infrastructure. These are the cameras that were donated by Lauren Howard from REC. So we just had to have an intergovernmental agreement to be able to, for CDOT to allow for those to be placed on their poles and within their right-of-way. Attached in your packet is the actual 23-page IGA. We do have a resolution that would give permission for Forrest to sign or Dale to sign that IGA if you approve this this evening.
Is that a head nod, or do we have to?
You do have to make a motion and vote.
Counsel, just for your information, I have reviewed the 24 pages that normally should take about four pages. But because it's CDOT, you got a lot of repeat and saying things 20 different ways. But generally, I think that we're good to go with the agreement, and I think the police are on board with it, so certainly be our recommendation, or my recommendation, that we go ahead and do it.
Where will these cameras be placed? Don't we set these CDOTs?
It's top secret.
Yeah. I don't know exactly where they, you.
Well, I did bring the documents. This has been presented before, I don't remember.
Seem to recall.
Exactly. We never got a follow-up, but I think it's at Broadway and Second at 285 First, and I think it happened. The LPR is a, I think this is a standard canned agreement, these actually aren't LPRs, they're just cameras. They have the ability to focus and zoom, read a license plate, but it's not the technology that automatically reads every license plate we require. This is something you can, you know, that's why it's 24 pages, cover everything. To put something on somebody else's pole needs the agreement. That's how the connection is, but I didn't actually put a communication to them.
Yeah, I didn't make that.
That sounds right.
And there's only three cameras?
Three, that CDOT is required to do the pole. If they approved the school, it would be CDOT, or if they approved the skate park, that would all the city infrastructure that the camera will be done on. These are the only three that require, is the CDOT, the states are doing.
Yeah, I remember. Now, yeah.
I would motion to approve 2019-04 intergovernmental agreement between CDOT and the City of Montevista to install ALPR system on CDOT ITS infrastructure.
I would second that motion.
It's been moved in second to approve Resolution 2019-04 intergovernmental agreement between CDOT and the City of Montevista to install ALPR system on CDOT ITS infrastructure. Is there any more discussion?
Nita?
Counselor Johnson?
Aye.
Counselor Ellathorpe?
Aye.
Counselor Segola?
Aye.
Mayor Becker?
Aye.
Motion carries? So the first item under your contracts, leases, and agreements is subject matter of Silver Mountain Disposal LLC Solid Waste Collection Agreement. It's a new trash service that will be offered in Montevista. Included in your packet is a solid waste collection agreement for Silver Mountain Disposal LLC. This is a non-exclusive franchise agreement with the City of Montevista for these services. As you may recall, the city has similar agreements with Waste Management and MDS from Creed. Earlier this year, our code enforcement officer contacted Silver Mountain Disposal representative as it was obvious that the company has a smaller number of customers within the city limits. It is required for any trash hauler in the city to have a written agreement with the city to provide these services within the city. Staff then contacted Silver Mountain, and this requirement was explained to Silver Mountain, indicated they desired to enter into such agreement with the city. So before you is an agreement that will need a motion and approval or denial on that agreement this evening.
Where are they out of? I'm just curious. You're here. Where are you from?
They're here.
Come talk with us.
What's here?
Come visit.
Yeah.
I'm Kathy Cordova, and my husband Steve is the owner's. And we're from Manassas.
Oh, okay.
Located in Manassas.
Been in the business for, going on 17 years. Our biggest contract is, we've had Adam State College going on 12 years, and we've just locked them in a year.
I had just, I'm surprised you're local, I had never heard of you.
What other communities do you serve?
We do most of Canales County, we have probably 8% of Canales County, most of the businesses are residential.
Alamosa, not in the town.
Not in the town, but we have 200 stops coming up towards Monro.
Wow, we're in the county.
So you're already kind of in this area anyway.
Right.
So it's just a natural progression.
And we, we didn't know if we needed.
Well, we, well, when Waste Management went out, we weren't in at all, and then, you know, I had already contacted the county, and then, yeah, we just, that would be my responsibility, I didn't think, but, we don't have that many, but we do have seven. So we want to, want to make it.
We have a big contract that we proposed to, on this, the housing. We'd like to be involved with the transfer rules, so we're just in part of the business group, so hopefully we can.
You do recycle?
Let them roll off.
But I do have a question on, and I don't know who I need to ask about this agreement?
Yes.
Would it be you, Nita?
Maybe.
It just, there's the dates of 2014 in here on number four?
Okay. I will definitely get that changed for you.
Okay, and the 4%, is that standard for every business, or just waste collection? Because I know Waste Management is a much bigger company than we are. Because I know Waste Management is a much bigger company than we are.
So, I apologize. Forrest is actually out this evening due to a doctor's appointment. I do know that, I believe he spoke with you folks about the?
It was more Krista, I work full-time somewhere else, so it was Krista, our office manager, and she's not here tonight.
So, that would actually be a question that we can direct to Forrest come Monday when he's back in the office.
Yeah, okay. So, I was just curious if that was standard for all businesses or is it just waste collection or was it Waste Management? Language from Waste Management contract, again, they're larger. We're just locally owned and operated. We're not as big as them, but so I was just wondering about the four percent. Okay, we'll ask you then.
So, we need a motion. Chris?
Yes.
Okay, I would move to approve the contract with the new trash hauler, the new franchise agreement with Silver Mountain Disposal LLC. It's nice to do business locally. That's what we try to do.
I would second that.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the franchise agreement with Silver Mountain Disposal LLC. Is there any more discussion?
Nita?
Counselor Johnson?
Aye.
Counselor Segola?
Aye.
Counselor Ellathorpe?
Aye.
Mayor Becker?
Aye.
Motion carries for approval.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And folks, I will get with Forrest on Monday and get that all corrected and then we'll get in contact with you.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
I will, before you leave, I've known this guy for a really long time and if anybody's as hardworking as he is to get where he's at, that guy's on it. Steve, good job. City logo approval, is that?
Hi.
Hey, Sticks, how are you this evening?
Careful, last person that made fun of me, I kicked him and I won.
Yeah, it shows.
Well, you don't see Rob here tonight. He went over budget and that's why I kicked him.
It's a microaggression.
So, Forrest asked me if I would kind of go over this part for him on behalf of him as well as, I guess, myself. We've submitted a logo for your approval tonight. The majority of you have stated that you like it and have endorsed it, so staff is requesting that you approve it. Just to kind of give you a little bit of an idea, I did not get paid for this. I did it one night when I couldn't sleep, so it's not like I've been paid. There's no cost to it. And the city is planning on, if passed, the city's planning on implementing this in stages, not just one day decide to go ahead and throw out everything that we have and be like, okay, here it is. So.
Any questions?
Not a one. I'm glad you addressed Margot's issues.
So, there it is.
And just something to go along with what Jenny was saying, like for the letters, the letterhead, we're actually at our last box of already printed letterheads, so that's something that we're not going to just quit using those letterheads. We're going to finish those.
I like it. I think it looks nice. And I think you do need to update things. Every once in a while, you get used to seeing the same thing over and over again and people don't look at you. And you change your hair color and they go, oh, my gosh. So, I think it's important to update things and get people's attention and so I like it. I think it's great.
So, kind of along those lines, I found it really interesting about the time that I kind of got involved in this CML, which is Colorado Municipal League, they just redesigned their logo and it came out in a newsletter this last month. And, you know, they stated it very well with their letter that came out of, you know, you don't design a city with no intentions of drawing people in, you know, and you don't look at a Coke can and not know that it's not Coke, you know? It's a branding for a city. It's something that puts your name out there and it's important to, you know, not forget your roots, but go forward with time as well that gives you an image.
Absolutely.
Yes.
I move we approve the new city logo as presented today.
I would second that motion.
It's been moved and seconded that we approve the new city logo. Is there any more discussion?
Nita?
Counselor Segola?
Aye.
Counselor Ellathorpe?
Aye.
Counselor Johnson?
Aye.
Mayor Becker?
Aye.
Motion carries for approval.
Thank you, Sticks.
Anytime, mayor.
So, the MVURA met last Tuesday evening. There were a number of highlights to the meeting, including the news that they will be receiving tax deeds from Rio Grande County, which will create the opportunity for demolition of three dilapidated properties within the city. In order to purchase these properties, the MVURA utilized its line of credit from SLV Fed to make it happen and the amount was spent was twenty-three thousand nine hundred and eighty-eight dollars and seventeen cents. Through this process, the city will be receiving funds from the county treasurer to satisfy past liens filed on the properties, but the total received. These funds are not anticipated for physical year twenty nineteen budget. The MVURA is requesting the city transfer those proceeds received likely be less than the approximate twenty-four thousand to the MVURA so that they can pay down the line of credit.
So, basically what this boils down to is if you don't get the money from the county, you don't transfer the money. So, it's not like our general fund is that we take twenty-four dollars and dollar it right after that. It's the funds that come from the county and then once the funds are given to the county, we transfer it to the URA and we pay.
So, it's a wash. We're just covering.
We're just covering it and as you guys probably may or may not know, we've got your budget coming up next month or so. So, we really have all your.
And I think it's so important that we take care of those blighted properties. We have several in town. I'm not sure which ones they were, what the deeds are, but it can't hurt, folks.
Oh, Franklin, all right. That's more.
Wasn't it the purple house on the corner as well with this rod, the septic that had come out? I think it's a, it's right there in, it's the purple house just across the street, kind of catty corner.
Dr. Jones, purple house in Montevista. The stand tower, just nowhere to turn. You drive by it every day. You turn on Morris, you go.
It's right there on the corner. It's just the little one on the corner.
I move we approve the request for reimbursement DRA regarding the transfer of funds covering the dilapidated property removal.
In the amount of?
In the amount of twenty-four thousand. Well, and actually, the amount of, I don't have the exact.
Twenty-three nine eighty-eight.
Twenty-three thousand nine eighty-eight seventeen.
And I would second that motion.
It's been moved and seconded that we approve the Montevista URA request for reimbursement of fees paid from the LOC of twenty-three thousand nine hundred and eighty-eight dollars and seventeen cents. Is there any more discussion?
So, just for your information, it's the address is already twenty while and it's going to check yourself.
Oh, so Franklin wasn't in?
No, it's still. Eighty while and.
Oh, and the Franklin, what's the address?
I don't have the Franklin one. It's the first avenue.
Okay.
Any more discussion?
Nita?
Counselor Segola?
Aye.
Counselor Ellathorpe?
Aye.
Counselor Johnson?
Aye.
Mayor Becker?
Aye.
Motion carries to approve.
For who's left out here, the URA has been working very hard to get this done and it's going to be a positive thing in this community. It's slow, like three years to get to this point. Wasn't that what they said last night, Mike?
At least, yeah.
Who's going to get the city manager report?
That's just in your packet.
Okay. City attorney report.
I guess it must be me.
Yes, sir. I don't want to kill your shoot.
Okay, mayor, counsel. This last couple of weeks, I've felt like a one-armed paper hanger. It's been busy. I really would like to reiterate what Margot said on the veterans program. I was out there and I bet there was at least two hundred people. And if it didn't bring tears to your eyes, then you must have been a robot because when you hear this ultimate sacrifice that folks have given and they're not here and we are, so it was amazing. The jets flew over and I, I mean, it was a very impressive program for a small place like this. We competed with anybody out there. I mean, it was really nice. So, anyway, I would like to kind of reiterate a little bit about urban renewal. I think they've been at a little bit of a standstill for probably a three-year program, but Forrest and I discussed coming up with a way to get some of these properties by tax deed and it's kind of an interesting deal. You don't get a marketable piece of property for a while, but you end up getting a piece of property that's been on the tax roll. A lot of the taxes and assessments really are the city's. So, we buy the property and we get money in return because some of those taxes are ours and we have possession of the property. So, we've got, we started out with three of them and they're, I think in the next two years, you're going to see a lot of good from urban renewal because there's properties that are, a lot of things are waiting for environmental assessments. They're waiting to get demolition okayed and, you know, you do one demolition in a neighborhood and you've improved that whole neighborhood. And then you can put that property up for sale to maybe the neighbors. There are properties that may be able to be renovated. Once urban renewal can get the title into their name or the city, then you can put it out for a proposal and an old building might be turned into apartments or who knows what. So, I think you're really going to see a lot of good done by urban renewal in the next couple of years and a lot of these neighborhoods are going to be improved, so I think it's going to be great. I think they're going to be doing a lot of work and you guys are, I think, going to be doing some real improvements. I think a couple of days ago, we did meet with the sheriff's office to go over Nita and the chief and myself and the sheriff and the county attorney. We all met to review our intergovernmental agreement regarding terms and conditions for prisoners, what happens if somebody gets sick, whose obligation is it and whose obligation is it to transport prisoners back and forth? And I'm going to be talking to the city judge and see if we can maybe streamline a little bit of things so that we don't have to go pick somebody up, bring them back here, advise them. If we can get some of that done by the communication where you, right now, the county judge can put somebody on speaker with a TV and advise them. And so, hopefully, we can avoid some downtime by having an officer go pick somebody up, bring them back here, advise them, take them back. You've shot a couple, two, three hours probably when it's all said and done. So, going to talk to her a little bit about trying to streamline some of that stuff, but basically, we've got an agreement with a few minor changes and I think, I think we had a good meeting. I think we're good to go. We did also have a meeting with the planning commission. We had several reviews and special requests and variance requests and, oh, before I forget, on urban renewal, we did have a proposal from the, I think it's one seventeen Adams property next to Sunflower Bank from three guys and they did approve their proposal. So, it may take a year or so to get that property renovated, but, you know, it's one property at a time and, you know, you take one this year, one next year, one next month and pretty soon, you know, the landscape changes. So, but the three guys did put on a very good proposal and a lot of work and effort in it and I think the urban renewal made a good decision on that deal as well. So. Well, it will be pretty much, I think, very little money that would go into, because they're going to spend quite a bit of money to renovate it, so, and it's going to be a complete renovation of that property. And I think that'll start changing. When you start getting the Montevilla, the facet building, that property, it's going to be real key, I think, to the downtown. See, we did with the agreement with CDOT, that was, took a look at that. That was twenty-four pages of a lot of stuff that could have been done in a shorter agreement, but nonetheless, you deal with the state and that's what we got to do. But I think that'll be very helpful here. We are going to have an open house. I think we've kind of set that, Nita, haven't we, for June, let's see, June, June the nineteenth at eleven o'clock, kind of an open house. So far, I think that date is good. And we're going to do some, we're pulling some figures as to whether we're making money, saving money or what we're doing here with the city courts and some of the things we've implemented. But we're going to open up, have an open house from, I think, eleven o'clock, so hopefully members of the council can be there. And I think we are going to have some press release regarding how our programs that we have implemented are working or not working. Soon as we see the figures, we'll know if we're doing any good, but I think we're doing some good. I did also, there's some new legislation that has come out regarding bonding and what the municipal court can do with bonds and everything that we are trying to do is to decriminalize the less serious matters that come before the city court and if they are more serious, we're going to put them into county court. But this new legislation basically somewhat decriminalizes minor offenses so the courts can't hold people too long. They've got to advise them and. gotta advise them and set a bond, and basically turn them loose if it's a small, minor infraction. So, I discussed that with the judge, and we're gonna try and make sure that we comply with the new rules and regulations. Let's see. We had a last court session, busy, had a lot of folks in court, and we handled a lot of matters. We're running people through community service, we're running people through counseling, young kids, trying to keep things off their record if they can do some things, to get some counseling for drug and those kind of issues, drug issues. And so, we're trying to do a lot of things that will be less than just put somebody in jail and hope that does the trick. We're trying to do some things that'll maybe help in the long run, take care of some of our issues here. But very busy court the other day, and so, and next month, I think we're gonna be just about as busy. Let's see. I think we are also looking at trying to do a lease on the Sugar Shack, if I'm not mistaken, I think they're trying to get that little business opened up, and so, I think we're gonna end up doing a short lease on that property. So, been busy, I don't know if anybody has any questions, but it's been a busy couple of weeks, and even though Forrest has been gone some of the time, he's still around, taking, making me do stuffs. Anybody have any questions? Thank you.
Thank you, Mike. Did you have anything you wanted to add to, for the URA? Did you have anything you wanted to add, can you end this discussion on the URA? Okay, thank you. I know we talked, they tried to peg you down last night to be here to talk. Thank you. Kids Connection?
Um, Nita says her, she's, she's, she will see you next time.
I have no arguments with that. Okay, council committee, city commission, council reports. Victor will start on your end.
I, well, last week, I was up in Keystone, chief was up there, there was a few more people from the valley, and I don't remember what it was called, do you remember what it was called?
See, it's the Risk of Virgin Conference, so it's about, find ways to reduce risk as to, uh, youth.
So, yeah, the conference, there was a ton of people, people from all over the valley, actually, from all over the state. There was some extremely good classes that were there, excuse me, talking about like drug prevention, crime prevention, abuse, just basically ranging, you know, in all specs, all aspects of life. It was very profitable to go there, and to actually see a bunch of the kids there that were getting involved, so that was, that was very enlightening to see and to experience. Other than that, I really don't have too much more.
Carrie?
No, neither in San Diego. Not as good as Montevista, you might be interested.
And you know me, I've always been busy. Lots of, not a lot of big changes, but some nice detailed changes to the shelter, and I'll visit with chief and the ordinance officer about that. Also, the other thing that has my heart, which is the Montevista Cemetery, we spent the entire Memorial Day weekend out there selling, well, we were selling carnations for a dollar a piece, trying to get people to be a little more environmentally conscious when they leave flowers on stones, and if you've ever been the second mower behind somebody that shoots one of those things out, it's not fun. And we also, for free, as a give back to the community, because they've been so generous with us, we had buckets with water and soap and brushes, and we were providing those to anyone who showed up for free so they could clean a headstone, and their own family headstones. Next year, I'm gonna encourage some groups to come out and just clean headstones, because we don't all have family here, and they don't all have family here. And Margot, I was at the memorial thing at the Veterans Center, you know, you didn't see me, I was moving my dad into his new abode out there, and that actually is something I've gone to for many years. Someday, I'll give you my book that my middle school kids wrote with interviews of all the World War II veterans that were there at the time. They were, they're wonderful, it's a wonderful facility, and we're so lucky to have them. Yeah. A wonderful place. Anyway, so that's what I have been doing for the good of the order, which is very disorderly, but. Perfect, perfect. We've got more, if you, if you need one, we've got a few more.
Well, I don't have a lot, 'cause at work, we've been extremely busy, we're finally getting, I'm not gonna say caught up, 'cause we're still behind, but we're gaining ground. You know, we went to the Dirt Drags, had a great conversation with the guy who puts that on, Michael Nicholas, I believe it was, Nicholson or Nicholas, the Dirt, the Dirt Drags are awesome, and there is a, they have a hill climb in Central City, it's in September, and they started that, I think it was seven years ago, he said, because of, they used to have hill climbs back in the fifties, and there was a gentleman out at the Dirt Drags, ninety years old, had his car there, and he was racing. And he was one of the first ones at the hill climb, so it was really cool to talk to a lot of those people, but it was really, it was a big event, there were a lot of people there. You know, I see things happening in town that have been good, positive. I fortunately got to meet Margot's daughter and her son-in-law, and it was a situation where I thought somebody was taking a package off one of the neighbor's porches, and I went from being somewhat a nice guy to a very mean, aggressive neighbor, and so they met me, and it was so pleasant, but, at first, but.
They weren't taking anything?
Yeah, they weren't taking anything, they were taking care of their neighbors, but, man, I was on fire, and then also, so people know, the Kirby Vacuum Cleaner Sales people came, and they had a lady that was going around, so this, for people to be watching out for, and she was not properly dressed, she was wearing a pair of sweats, a plaid shirt, like a little coat, and she was kind of, she just didn't look right for the air fresheners. Yeah. So, we got one of those doorbells that ring, so it's camera, and when you push a button, it takes picture, it videotapes everything. Well, Jennifer was on saying that, you know, I'm not coming to the door, I'm busy right at the moment, and this lady's like, oh, okay, and I was headed, because the alarm at my business was going off, so I was headed out there, and I thought, nope, I'm a block from the house, we're gonna go rattle their cages, so I'd come flying up in my driveway and freak the lady out, and all these guys were in this van, and they kinda panicked, so I was like, whatever, just go on, we don't want your stuff, and I went to the corner, and I looked at my wife, and I said, I'm not putting up this stuff, so I went and confronted them, and she's like, no, don't do it, just call somebody, don't do it. I did, I called Nita. And ran them off. What was really cool is they went right out to Nita's house, and she ran them off, so it's being diligent like that that really helps.
And I live in a county, so I'm a chairman, and when they knock on my door, I'm like, um, so you also have to have a permit from the county as well as the city, and they're like, what? And I'm like, um, yeah, I, there, okay. Between the two of us, they, they aren't like, done.
That really did shock me. And they, I said, how are things going, and they said, well, you have to do this in town, I said, out of town, they said, well, we made mistakes, we're lucky we're there.
Life in a small town.
When I confronted them, they were quite hesitant. I was like, where's your permit? Of course, they didn't know me from Adam, and the guy's like, well, I have it right here, and he kinda fumbling around, and I said, where's your permit, man, I know you gotta have one, and he finally said, well, you know, my director, my supervisor, and I said, he doesn't have it either, I'll bet you money. Well, then I was calling Nita, and I said, you guys don't, I'm the mayor, so you're not gonna get anything on me here, and they're like, really, you're the mayor, and I said, yeah, I really am the mayor. Well, as I was standing there talking to them, my neighbors start coming out and seeing me out in the street confronting all these people, so I had a whole bunch of people moving down the street, they got out of there pretty quick, so.
Just so folks listening know, that if somebody comes into town, the Kirby Vacuum Cleaner, Viero, any of those companies who do door-to-door sales, they have to have a door-to-door sales permit that is with the city. It's a two-hundred-dollar fee, every person who's gonna be going door-to-door will get fingerprinted, and then they'll be given a special ID that says that they are, that they have been, they've gone through the city with all the proper channels, and they are allowed to be out there. So, if you see somebody out there who doesn't have that, send them my way. Anybody who does door-to-door vending has to have a permit.
Oh, that's what the air spray was for, was their free gift, nice. There you go. And one other thing I forgot to say, are you done, Dale? Mayor?
Yes.
Okay. I have actually, in reflection of the Neighborhood Watch's request for everyone in council to get involved, I have actually been visiting with a friend who would like to probably work with Neighborhood Watch and me, I'll help head that up on a project, but I have to get more information, and she and I will get together next week, and I'll probably come to the next Neighborhood Watch meeting, and sort of, and it would be an all-community event that would be something, I think, really good, they do, I'm not gonna go into it, 'cause I don't have enough information, but I didn't forget ya. So, there you go.
Thanks. Oh, yeah, Brothers Keepers this weekend, and it starts tomorrow, right? Friday, or is it Saturday? That'll be, that's what I was thinking, that'll be a big event for a lot of motorcycle people coming in, there's a lot of support from the whole valley for this. Yeah, so, there'll be a bunch of rough-looking bikers in town, and they're great people, so go out and see them. Outside of that, meeting adjourned until June twentieth, six p.m.